Check please, starting with Councilor Aigerman.
Aigerman number 12.
Shan number 10.
Vogel number 9.
Tanta eight.
Connell seven.
Number six.
Zid number four.
Junta three.
Devlin two.
Khan number one.
Very well.
You want to invite them in for the moment of silence or you want to wait?
Um... Yeah.
Yeah.
We have some guests, so we're bringing them in.
Hey, man, why don't you come in? We have a moment of silence, then we're going to do you, okay? So rather than wait outside for a moment, so...
It feels safer already. Yeah. I'll rise, please. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to just take a moment of silence to recognize the past of Eugene Greco. The Greco family has owned and operated the Starboard Galley for, well, longer than I've lived in the city, 40 years, and been very generous to the city in so many ways, most recently providing meals for our guests at the Coast Guard Station who I'm sure appreciated it during the recent showdown. Go back to the 250th anniversary of the city, how they were hosting events for the city and acknowledging their role as leaders, not just in the restaurant community but in the business community at large. Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And be seated. We'll call the order, please.
Full call for the meeting of January 28th. Councilor O'Brien is absent. Councilor Shan?
Present.
Councilor Tanta?
Present.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Zid?
Present.
Councilor Devlin?
Here.
Councilor Earls is absent. Councilor Aigerman?
Here.
Councilor Junta?
Present.
Councilor Khan?
Present.
Council President Connell?
Present. Are there any late filed items?
There is one late file item, Order 86, with respect to the CPA recommendations.
What is the rule of counsel?
Motion to accept the late filed items.
Second. Moves in second. A discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take that up in orders. And now we have a special recognition of, obviously, some of our police officers. Mayor, did you want to say a few words or have the marshal say something?
I'd like the marshal to come and tell this incredible story of, again, the great work of our Newburyport Police Department.
Yep. Marshall Murray?
I'll hold you guys up for a second. First of all, I want to thank you guys. Let me deal with this real quick. A lot of times we recognize our officers internally and a lot of people don't hear about it. They get a letter in their file, but this is something I think that was extraordinary that I think that we should share with the council, the public and everybody. These officers, Officer Martin Kippe with us here tonight, he's one of the officers, he's got the flu, so he's one of the officers. Officer Marshall, Officer Gavin, Officer Smith and Sergeant Whitney. They're working on the 4:00 midnight shift, December 15th, this past Christmas season. And motor vehicle, they got dispatched from a motor vehicle accident, went off the road, hit a mailbox. When they arrived, Officer Marshall arrived first on scene. There was a woman in the car, slumped over the steering wheel, and the car was locked, so his quick action, he broke the back window. Officer Gavin arrived on scene immediately, they both pulled her out of the vehicle, later on the side of the road, immediately hooked her up with the AED, and the AED immediately advised to shock, which very rarely happens. This continued for four cycles. They all did CPR. Every one of them performed CPR. They took turns, it was about a 15-minute duration, and they finally got her breathing somewhat. She was transported to the hospital, med flighted to Boston, and they just did an outstanding job. It was great teamwork by all of them. I just felt that we should share that with everybody. And I want to recognize them with a recognition. I'm not going to read them all, but I hand them to them. But I just do want to say that Victoria is with us tonight, and she is alive and well.
Thank you, officers. Wow.
Just wanted to, they get a recognition coin and a nice letter in their files, so...
Maybe you could pose with them with their certificates of recognition. Well, thank you, Marshal. One more.
You guys are celebrities tonight.
The photo is taken.
That's a great one. That's the one.
Thank you. Take care. Take care now, guys. Can you smell the night in council chambers? Anne, have a nice evening. Have a nice evening. Yeah, that is awesome. They all get a hug on the way out the door. That's pretty awesome.
This is a tough act of Vogel. Congratulations. Nice to see you, Bill.
We're about to start then.
Literally, nice to see you.
Regular waters and public comment, so... If you've never done CPR, even training, to keep it up for 15 minutes is absolutely exhausting. It really is. We have one speaker, but I'm sure it's worth hearing. Bill Harris. You can editorialize.
I'm not sure it's worth hearing, but I will say briefly that one of your agenda items is to consider the rights of the city of Newburyport that go with the deed from the NRA to the Custom House Maritime Museum. And for those who supported the direct property transfer and for those who were opposed, who would have preferred the city own it and lease it, in either case, the city should accept these rights because in case something goes wrong with the management of the museum, the city has rights of reverter. And hopefully, the incentives of the deed will keep the city from ever having to take the museum back, but please accept your rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. And now it's time for the mayor's comment.
Good evening, thank you, President Connell, members of the City Council. I think there's been a lot of discussion about our really poor response in terms of managing this last snow event. I think all of you either read about it in the paper, hopefully listened to the local pulse. As mayor, I take full responsibility. Buck always stops with me. Lot of series of, you know, things just aligned that made this incredibly difficult event. I've listed them there. I don't want to go over all of them, but it certainly will be posted on my blog. But it was, you know, essentially the type of storm, the personnel, lack of staff, lack of equipment, temperature dropping, rising, dropping. There's just a whole series of things that happened that made a very difficult situation. We've had several post-mortem meetings. Our current plan of operations is still very effective, it just couldn't be implemented that day, so I assure you that things will significantly improve in our next storm. Had the opportunity for, to attend the annual Merrimack Valley Chamber Mayors and Managers Meeting. It was a really nice event where all the mayors and managers of the valley get together, share highlights of what's going on in their city. Lieutenant Governor Polito joined us, and it was also an opportunity where she, Andrew Flanagan, the town manager of Andover, the mayor, Rivera of Lawrence, and the town manager of North Andover were all recognized for their extraordinary efforts during the Merrimack Valley gas explosions. Also had the opportunity to attend Marva Healy, our Attorney General's inauguration on the 16th at Emerson College. It was a warm and well-attended event, and she pledged on clear priorities as the people's attorney, opioid crisis, clean energy, climate change, gun violence prevention efforts, and education funding. The 40th Annual Meeting of the Mass Municipal Association Meeting and Trade Show was last weekend, and this is the organization that every municipality across the Commonwealth belongs to, and was really pleased to see Councilor Connell, Tanta, Vogel, Shan and Khan attend on Friday. There were, you know, numerous workshops, learning opportunities, meetings. It always is a great opportunity. Governor Baker spoke on climate change at the opening session on Friday morning. The new Senate President Karen Spilka spoke at the Women Elected to Municipal Office Luncheon, and Senator Warren and Senator Markey spoke to a mayor's breakfast on Saturday morning. Lot to learn, lot of information, and it was a great opportunity over that two-day weekend to participate in the annual convention. Tomorrow, the trip that was supposed to happen on February 5th to Washington, what was delayed because of President Bush's funeral, is rescheduled for tomorrow. I will be leaving at 5:00 in the morning and heading to Washington to meet at Army Corps of Engineers Headquarters. We're meeting with Senator Markey, Senator Warren and Congressman Moulton, pushing forward on the dredging of the Merrimack River and the 204 Study, which relates to the dredging and doing nourishment. We also had a, I think I had reported out to you in my last update, that there was a meeting with state organizations that we wanted to talk about Plum Island and really didn't get very far. So we had an internal meeting with our Conservation Administrator, Councilor Zid was there, DPS was there, Emergency Management, myself and Chief of Staff, and we really began to brainstorm about what we need to protect Plum Island. I think it's important, you know, as everybody sort of sighs when we talk about Plum Island and all the challenges there, but the important thing to remember as a barrier island is that it protects our city as a barrier island. We'd be a situate if we didn't have Plum Island, I mean, when you really think about it in terms of that storm surge coming in. So it's important that we protect this barrier island, and so we're working on trying to find a way to fund an annual do nourishment, whether it be increasing fees at the parking lot. There is a bill that you know Representative Calperas has filed for us to take complete ownership of that. So we're really struggling with how to protect this, how to fund the services it needs, but I think it was a positive meeting, a step in the right direction in terms of beginning to look at ways that we can not have to always go through huge permitting hoops and, you know, just trying to move sand from one section of the island to the other. So I think we have a good strategy in place to move in that direction. The rail trail Phase Two, we have decided that it's really important that we move forward on the cleanup of the PCBs at this juncture. We finally have, the beach erosion is put up. If you look at the picture there, you'll see the white snow along the river, but you'll see green humps there, gray humps. That's the temporary beach erosion that's been installed. Obviously, we don't want you going behind there and looking at it because there's PCBs there, but we're concerned about another storm surge that could potentially cause another washout and which could be, we could be directed to start this process all over again. So we have Merrimack Valley Commission Brownfields Grant, so we're going to use that for StanTech to prepare the bid documents. We have some CPA funding for reengineering, rebuilding and permitting. That's $177,850, but there will be a gap, probably somewhere around $40,000. Jordi Vining will be putting together additional details on what we need to move forward. So first step is obviously putting the bid packages together, the reengineering and the permitting for the site, and then we will need, we're applying for a Mass Trails Grant. We're also advocating for release of $750,000 in the environmental bond bill as we move forward into cleanup and redesign of that walkway, the rail trail, so it will have to be raised up so it becomes protected and also provides greater protection to the wastewater treatment plant. You'll be getting a lot more detail on that once the transfer comes forward to you, which I would imagine would either be your February 11th or the next meeting after that. Very pleased of the advocacy of Senator Markey, Senator Warren and Congressman Moulton. As many of you might have read, that the NRC was ready to extend the licensing of Seabook Nuclear Plant without the big public meeting that happens this summer and to talk about, you know, the problems with the silico reactives, you know, degradation that's happening there. So they were successful in delaying the extension of the licensure, so we're very pleased about that. There was a conference call this past Wednesday with a lot of representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about the governor's plan to fund education. The conference call indicated that by FY '26, $3.38 billion will be infused into the public education system. They're starting now with the primary recommendations of the Education Foundation Review Committee, which includes English language learners, economic disadvantaged students, special education and health benefits for staff that have been, you know, really a drain on a lot of budgets. When you look at the House One budget in terms of the current allocation for funding, we don't see anything really this year in terms of what we've been seeing in terms of allocations in our Chapter 70, you know, half of it going off the top to the charter school. And so they're saying this is a transition year, but we will continue. We know that the legislature really has prioritized Senator Spilka education this year, so we're hoping that we see additional Chapter 70 fundings to school districts like Newburyport, as well as, you know, we've been really advocating for a change in charter school funding. That's really the way that we're going to receive the biggest help in terms of funding our schools. But at this point, we had a retreat with the school committee last week and are looking at funding. Most of their funding this year will go into contract because they're negotiating new contracts this year, and with that translates to a little over a million one in terms of the 3.5 that we talked about during the joint meeting of the school committee and the City Council as we go forward. Waste Committee, many of you know, I know Councilor Khan sits on this committee. We've been, they've been meeting for about six months and really doing a real deep dive into waste and what's happening in other communities. On February 11th, they will present several recommendations that they're putting forward for the City Council and all of us to consider as we go forward. There's been a lot of speculation, there's been requests for early information from the Daily News. I ask that everyone be patient and let the process unfold the way it should. The information will be in your packet on the 11th. Firebase EMS, we had a final meeting today with Terry Rooney, who's been our consultant, who has done a really, really thorough job in researching and putting together information for us on operating Firebase EMS. The, we're going to put it in your packet as a communication for your next meeting because there are so many moving parts here. We're not ready to ask you to do anything just yet, but want you to be up to speed on what this report says and, you know, the comparisons to other cities, preliminary budgets, what it would cost to run this. And on the other track, we have tremendous work to do with the firefighters and their union to move this forward. But this is where we're starting, and I think it's a good place in your next meeting to begin to review this report that was put out. Wanted to also let you know that the Newburyport Bank and the Derek Hines Foundation have established a special account. Derek Hines Foundation has already allocated $3,100 to Coast Guard families, and the Newburyport Bank is seeding this account with $1,000. Although at this juncture and this moment in time, we might be okay in terms of the federal government moving forward, but the impact to the Coast Guard families has been hugely significant. And I heard one mother, one bottle of her formula is $40, and when you have no money coming in. So these are families who really need our help as a Coast Guard city, birthplace of the Coast Guard, so if anyone is interested, you can go to any branch of the Newburyport Bank and make a donation, or you can go online to the Derek Hines Foundation. Complete Streets, Thursday night, January 31st, 7 o'clock upstairs. TEC will be presenting information about all that they've studied, all that they've heard during the first meeting, about high priority areas in the city that could benefit from a Complete Streets model. The first grant is for $400,000, and we will certainly be putting something out for that grant in the spring, but this is an opportunity for everyone to come and weigh in on classification of all of these areas as high, medium or low. Really encourage as many people to attend as possible so we could begin to, you know, figure out what we're going to go for in this first round of funding with Complete Streets. And finally, on February 6th, at 7 o'clock, I will be giving my annual State of the City. We'd encourage all of you to attend, it's a public meeting, and I will do a version, I'll do the smaller version at the chamber at breakfast on the 8th at 7:30. So thank you for your time.
Councilor Tanta?
Just a request that we have microphones and speakers for the Complete Streets thing set up, you know, so I can hear. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On our agenda, you'll see a, an opportunity to hear from Bob Ullik, who is chairman of the NRA, custodian of the most hotly contested piece of property over the past 40 years anyway, in the city of Newburyport. They are in the process of disposing, I would say disposing, awarding some of their properties to other entities for long-term institutional control. I thought it was appropriate for Mr. Ullik to give us a brief presentation on where they're headed and what their plans are. Bob?
Thank you, Council President Connell and City Councilors. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I'm going to, if I can, give you some handouts. Now, these handouts are kind of a synopsis update of memo that I sent, I think, back in November, December, two, well. And so just briefly, I wanted to give you all an update as to where the Redevelopment Authority is and its, and its business, as I know it's important to you all, and to give you kind of an update as to what we're planning as it relates to 2019. In this packet is kind of a brief timeline of where we've been and where we're going, and I'm going to just ask you to just take a look at. So attached to that are three graphics. The first graphic is what we call the Framework Plan, and that is what the Redevelopment Authority voted on as it relates to expanded park to the east and west of existing Market Landing Park and reduced parking areas. The second plan is over top of a current existing condition survey, shows you the disposition of the variety of Redevelopment Authority parcels, and I'm going to go through that briefly as it relates to the memo. And then the last sheet is just an enlargement of what I'll call the Custom House parcel that goes from Merrimack Street to the river. So going back to the memo for a moment, so again, I just wanted to reiterate that the Framework Plan was voted on by the Redevelopment Authority in 2017, and then towards the tail end of 2018, we created the plan that goes along with it, that is this, this conveyances plan. And so I wanted to just identify for you all that on the, on what we call the West Lot, there's two parcels, parcel A1 and A2. That's just my designations as it relates to this, nothing legal. A1 shows you the expanded park, West Park, and A2 shows you the reduced parking area, kind of in orange, so expanded park area in green, reduced parking area in orange. Likewise, on the East Lot, there is an expanded park area that is green, that is labeled as B1, and a reduced parking area labeled as B2 in orange, and those coincide with the Framework Plan. Then, moving further east, if we look at, it's probably easiest to look at the enlargement, or actually stay back on the, on the overall site plan. So C1 is referred to as the submerged tidelands, that is currently owned by the Redevelopment Authority, and our intentions and, our intent is, in the first quarter of this year, is to convey that via sale to, in equal measures, to the city and to the Waterfront Trust, once we agree to the terms between the city and the Waterfront Trust and the authority. And we hope to have drafts of those deeds in, in the next month. Then, going back to the Custom House parcel, as discussed, 25 Water Street was sold to the Newburyport Maritime Society with deed restrictions as, as discussed with the city, agreed to with the city, the Redevelopment Authority and the Newburyport Maritime Society. So that was finalized, so that, if you look at the third sheet, so that's essentially the whole entire area that is in the vanilla area called D1, yet to be conveyed. And one of the next pieces also is the area, as we had discussions with the city, was to sell the area labeled as D2 to the city, which includes the area where the Fisherman's Memorial is, the road that crosses between the NRA East parking lot and the parking lot for the Harbor Masters facility, and a little bit of the lawn area there. And the reason that it's kind of oddly shaped is that this was a registered piece of land, and it was easiest to convey these in the parcel designations that were indicated. And if you look at the areas that are striped in blue, the intent is to still allow, while the city will own those areas, the area in, in pink that is D2 with the blue striping is just to allow the Maritime Society to still have activities across what is the lawn area there. There's another striped area which allows for the continued easement of the Clipper City Rail Trail to exist across that, that property. And then, so that's, that's in terms of the intent for conveyances as it relates to those parcels. And then as it relates to the West Lot, just an update, we had been going through an activity use limitation on the West Lot as it related to closing out some issues related to soil remediation. That effort has been completed and submitted with a permanent solutions and conditions statement, so there's no further activity required. And the A- And the AOL does allow for park expansion on that, on that property. Another piece of activity that, that we anticipate in the spring of 2019, we hoped to get it done last fall, but weather didn't hold out for us, was we're working with the city, the city asked us to expand the, the waste management associated with sea level in our East parking lot, and so we're expanding that and recreating that, such that it will accommodate both recycling and waste. And the orientation of that was worked out in association with some neighbors that had some discussion and some points about visibility and such. So as to 2019, our intent, as, as we've discussed, you know, who has funding, who doesn't have funding, and, you know, our hope is that we work towards a collective effort in which our next steps include developing an RFP for preliminary design of the expanded park areas to the east and to the west of Market Landing Park. That would be something we'd hope to do in the spring. Associated with that, we hope to have a public engagement process associated with that, so that it's a process that everyone is involved in and buys into the end result. Our, our goal is, you know, if we agree to pay for the, the design efforts that help advance this along, would be that, you know, it, we're in a position where everybody is supportive of that design, and it's something that doesn't go on a shelf, but we're able to, able to hopefully move forward with, then, with figuring out how we get construction dollars. So again, we've estimated that, you know, we would put out an RFP this spring, hopefully design would occur between, you know, this spring and in the fall. And then, if, you know, if everything goes well at that point, we could discuss our funding of final design documents, which would probably continue on into 2020. In the meantime, we could then work collaboratively on figuring out where we could get funding to build the park, and whether that's a phased effort, or whether it's done as one thing, that's, you know. So I think we wanted to set out for you, kind of what our thoughts were on, on 2019, and, you know, be in a dialogue to, to work together on that.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for coming up and being so responsive to our inquiry. Other questions from the councillors? I know some of you have been engaged here for a while in what is going on with the NRA, others have not, but we thought it was appropriate to, for everybody to get a look at what's anticipated and what the timeline looks like. Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. First is, I, I realize the NRA was, was neither a proponent nor really had much to do with the garage, but there was a provision in the planning board approval of that facility that 100 spaces would come off the waterfront prior to the occupancy being submitted, so whether you like it or not, you're now part of that discussion. As we know here, from some recent updates, the, the garage is, I guess, imminently completing per se April. How, how will the NRA be taking 100 spaces off and expanding the park by that timeline, or are we going to be in an impasse to open that facility? And again, I realize that you've been put in a pickle, which will be germane to some other comments.
Yeah, I think, you know, to be honest, I think at certain points, we've been anxious to move forward with removing those parking spaces. I think if we get into a process where we're actively moving forward with design towards a final solution, we're, for us right now, having, continuing to have that parking through next summer at least, would allow us to have more revenue that we could put towards design or put towards construction. So I think that we haven't kind of officially, you know, said one way or another, I think our preference at this point would be not to spend money on something that would be interim, but to, to wait, generate the revenue that we could, and put that towards, you know, furthering the design.
One other question, if I may?
Follow?
Sure. I mean, if, if I can come around.
Go ahead.
Okay. So on the timeline in general, about sort of the NRA dissolution, which was of much discussion here during the ad hoc and so forth, so you just laid out a plan that takes us through 2020. The NRA still exists, clearly still holds the land, apparently is, is quite involved in the design. I did not hear anything mentioned about transferring to the Waterfront Trust. Can you expand on where that process is? Is that still envisioned, or are we looking at the NRA designing, building, and operating the park?
Uh, I, what I would say at this point is, is that the intent is still for us to convey it to the Waterfront Trust. I think we want to get to a point, our biggest concern is we don't want to pay for a design and then convey the land and feel like there's uncertainty about whether that park is going to get built. So we want to get to a point where we feel like everyone's committed to making that happen, and that there's, you know, the, the ball is rolling both in terms of raising the money for the construction of it, as, in the process of that design. When that exact timeframe is, I can't tell you, but I think, you know, our intent is, you know, in good faith, we're wanting to put forth funding for the design, but we want to also, that's why our intent is to, you know, have a collaborative effort with this, so that hopefully we're moving forward and we're kind of all, you know, thinking that this is a good thing.
Other questions from councillors? Counselor Z again. Go ahead.
Yeah, final, final question, I promise. Last question I wanted to ask you was, how do you envision the city council fitting in to working with the Redevelopment Authority? If you'll just bear with me for one second. You know, you, you mentioned in your comments that the deed restrictions were, quote, "agreed to" by the city. We are part of the city, actually, and we haven't agreed to anything, because in fact it's coming in tonight, and so I'll have more to say on that later. But my question is, going forward now, how do you want the city council to interact with the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority? Where do you view our role? Do you view us as having any role in the discussion, or are you working primarily with the administration? Like, for example, you mentioned the tidelands jointly going to both the city. There are financial and operational implications that, you know, believe it or not, do impact, impact what we do here in this room. So I'd love to hear how we should work together, how you envision us working together, and where you see the city council fitting in to that in the next, say, year and a half as these next parcels go.
I just promised that we'll be collaborative on it. I can't tell you exactly what those roles will be. I think we need to figure out how, you know, as we engage in a, in a, both the transfer of these properties, you know, I think our hope is, is that, that there's going to be dialogue about what the terms of those are. I, we don't see any, we don't see any complications from our perspective in terms of the transfer of those properties. We're not going to try to put any kind of onerous language on, you know, the transfer of those. We're going to leave, you know, when we transfer the submerged tidelands, for example, it's my understanding, we're going to transfer it, as I indicated, in equal measure to the city and the Waterfront Trust, and let, you know, the, the two entities kind of work through, work through the particulars of that. As it relates to the, the design of the open space, I, I'm hopeful that, because we're going to have a public, open engagement process, that we're going to inform you about, you know, our dates and times for, you know, you know, design selection, designer selection, and as the design process goes forward, and have those process open, such that, you know, you can encourage your constituent involvement. If there's other involvement to be had beyond that, I think it'll be something that we'll work through as we progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing nothing else?
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Quite a bit to chew on, and it's been a long time coming to get to this point. I think it's time to move on to consent agenda.
Mr. President, the consented agenda this evening consists of four items. One, the approval of the minutes for the January 14th meeting. There's one transfer, transfer 37, parking fund $130,000 to parking collection system, same amount, that's to go to budget and finance. There's, there are two communications. Communication 107, FY 2019 mid-year budget report, that's a change from receive and file to go to budget and finance instead. Let me guess, your 108, 2019 class two vehicle license, Great Bay auto body is applying, that's to go to license and permits. No appointments, that's it for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as amended. Seconded by Counselor Tanta. Discussion, hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. We have the mayor's update. What's the rule of consent file?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Janta. Discussion, hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That is done. Let's move on to communications, please.
First communication is Communication 106, which is the Ad Hoc Committee on the Waterfront West, report to full council. It's in the packet, 17 pages, and addenda.
I would accept a motion to receive and file, but I would like to hear from Counselor Agaman at some point, so.
Yeah, motion to receive and file.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Tanta. Discussion, Counselor Agaman.
Point of order, if I may. Let me make sure that I.
I apologize. Yes, Counselor Will Baster accused himself.
Pardon me, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Counselor, I didn't spot that one. No.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the draft report was in the packet. We had our last meeting, our seventh meeting of the ad hoc committee, and there were some non-members who participated as well. We had a few edits that, for the purpose of the, of the public, I want to read into the record, and they were adopted unanimously by the five voting members, and I'll provide them to the clerk after the meeting, so he can transcribe them. Bear with me. Okay, so, on page four, under recommendations for land, land uses, we had, there's a 2G and a 2H. 2H was unanimously stricken as duplicative, you can delete that. Next was, page seven, there's a graphic at the bottom of the page, and the writing on the graphic is stricken, so there will be no reference to property line, nor to max building envelope line, 1 to 2 ratio, 63.4 degrees. That's going to be stricken, because the, the numbers weren't relevant to the graphic. On page 11, recommendation 6H is in Henry, there was a mistake, it should read, "For further study, consider allowing remote parking to be located 500 feet from non-residential uses, instead of nearly 300 feet." And then, finally, on page 12, recommendation for design standards 8C Charlie, the, it should read, "Further study forbid flat roofs," not zoning provision forbid flat roofs. So with that, the report was completed, and it's before the council. I, I guess there are only two recommendations that the report's supposed to have for next steps. If you please turn to page 16, I'll read it for people watching on TV. Having received this report of the ad hoc committee, the city council may wish to consider the following next steps. Evaluate three-dimensional computer-based model of 35 feet, 45 feet, and 55 feet building heights, consistent with the recommendations of this report. We don't have those yet, so that, that is being prepared at the cost of the property number. Then, you turn to the next page, second, next step the council may wish to consider, authorize the Office of Planning and Development to draft proposed revision, the Newburyport zoning ordinance, section 24, which is the Waterfront West overlay district, consistent with the recommendations of this report. That would just be a drafting exercise. It would still need, if it were to, if it were to proceed, at least one councillor would have to sponsor it as legislation, introduce it under our rules, it has to be referred to committee, and under state law, there has to be a public hearing before the planning board, and so the, the public would have an opportunity to, to comment. This is just the drafting exercise. And then finally, authorize special legal counsel Rebecca Lee of Mins Levin in Boston to draft a form of development agreement for Waterfront West, consistent with the recommendations. That was also part of our charge. The development agreement is essentially a, a contract that goes with the zoning, that binds, binds the developer to certain obligations for mitigation and public benefits and return, vests their rights in, in a program of, of development. With that, I can answer questions, but again, there, there's material to be read. I'll yield the floor.
Counselor Shand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the intent to do these in series or parallel? I mean, do you, do we want to have the 3D imaging done first, so we can evaluate that before we go off and have legislation started to be drafted by the planning office, or is that something that would be done sequential, I mean, at the same time? From a timeline, anyway?
That's, that's really up to the council. We didn't make a recommendation at the committee below as far as timing for these three things, the 3D model, the zoning, and the development agreement. That's up for discussion. I would, I would want to hear from Andy Port, the planning director. Certainly, no councillor, I think, would be ready to introduce legislation until they, that person had seen the 3D model. So the question really is whether we get started on the drafting in advance. So maybe.
Yes, I certainly believe it's possible to start drafting the ordinance, it's obviously a relatively notable placeholder for that section there, which would have to be informed by the 3D model, but I do believe it's possible to flush out the majority of the rest of it, at least in draft form, while that's being done.
And the other part of that question, though, was, the, the third recommendation, at what point, I think implied by your question, does our special counsel begin to work on a development agreement?
Well, that, that, that I don't think needs to wait for the 3D model at all, and I, I would recommend, because we don't have, at least in my time here, we've never done a development agreement.
Correct.
So I think the council would benefit to have special counsel Lee show you what that document looks like. So I, I think, because that's a key part of this, is, is understanding the contractual aspect to it, so that, to take the phrase from NED, we actually get what we're promised. So I would, I would recommend, it's up to the council, that you, you release her to start drafting that. But there are going to be placeholders in it. For example, we'll have to decide what are the public benefits you want, things like that.
Good. Thank you. Does that answer your questions, Counselor? Good. Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to publicly thank the, the chair and the members of the committee. So there's a lot of work, and clearly, you get a 17-page report, which is, is substantial on its own, but, you know, hours of discussion with different folks. What I don't agree with is a couple of things. I don't, I don't necessarily agree on the process that's just been outlined. I personally would not favor invoking the special counsel at this time, just because it's, it's quite an expensive endeavor to do so, and until we, I, I'm approaching this from the position that there are still several substantive things, policy-wise, that we haven't agreed on. And my, what I envisioned for the ad hoc was that we would take a vote on this floor on something that we can principally agree on before we start working towards development agreements, zoning ordinance. And if there were just minor things in the document that I, that I didn't agree with, I think I'd be easier going, but there are several things that I think demand debate. And so I would question, why would, why would we receive and file this, as has been motioned? I think we should refer it to committee, and it should come out for an approval vote of the city council. Now granted, it would come out, let's say, as an order that we principally agree to what the document says, and that only requires six, but that's a lot closer to eight than, right now, I have no idea how many there are in support of this. So that, that would be my suggestion, but I, again, I would reiterate, I don't think we should bring on, I, I'm, I'm a strong proponent of the special counsel, it's just timing is everything and money's everything. So we start writing, writing checks to write against the development agreement that we don't even know what we're negotiating on yet, and similarly, for Mr. Port and his office to start doc drafting a thing when we don't know if that's where we want to go. I think that some work in this business, so they're, they're probably a lot more comfortable and familiar with it than I am, but that would be my suggestion, is this goes to committee, and we should fight, continue to fight this out, and so we can come to this floor with something and get a, a minimum of a six to five vote on it that says, this is where we're going. I mean, six is a substantial part of the way to eight, and that's, that's how I think you get there. It's my two cents.
Let's see what Shand went up first. I'm going to take Counselor Shand, please.
Um, thanks. How long will it take to have the 3D imaging done, since it's going to be done by your organization, I'm guessing?
Say at least a month to six weeks, because there'll be a lot of paperwork to make sure the consultant, there are various different aspects.
You guys say that into the mic, sorry.
Sorry. I would estimate a, a month to six weeks, at least, to make sure that that's, addresses the concerns that the committee had had and is outlined in the report here.
All right. Counselor Agaman, and then Counselor Cobb.
I've already spoken.
Go ahead. Counselor Cobb.
Oh, thank you, Council President. I just want to also agree with, with the councillors from Ward 1 said. I actually thought the process was that this was going to go to committee and adversity and file, so I do like that idea. I think there are certain aspects, we didn't spend a lot of time on the development agreement as well, I think it was mentioned in one of the meetings, so I, I would like to echo support of that, and just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Agaman.
Yeah, no, that's probably my failure, that I don't think it's actually proper for us to send this to committee, because what you're doing then is you're, you're prejudging an ordinance. I think we've taken. I think we've taken this as far as we can. The proper debate has to be over a proposed ordinance, and then we have to follow Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. So, this was, this exercise, I mean, how can I put it? It was to demonstrate that, to signal to the property owner that if they can't play within this ballpark, they need to take their jacks and go home. That was really what I understood this to be. And that this would be the outline for someone to at least draft an ordinance, but none of us could be bound, under state law, until an ordinance comes in and it gets referred to the planning board. So I don't really know what more work in committee can be done. It's time to get an ordinance written, so that we can notice it and take public comment formally, have the planning board react to it. The one question for me is whether you want to wait until you have the four to six weeks, or whatever it is, to get the 3D model, thinking that, because say the 3D model comes back, and it shows buildings at 35, 45, and 55 on the street, which is what's envisioned here, and that's just unacceptable. Maybe it would be worth, you know, everyone just saying, forget it, this isn't going to work. So I can hear that argument. But on the development agreement, I really think it's different. I think the development agreement, remember, we're not paying, the property owners pay. So we take our bills and we forward them to them, because they're the ones upsetting the status quo. So they're paying, it's not public money. And the benefit also is there are going to be other projects, even if this one craters, that we're going to want to have a development agreement, I hope. Because, take for example, at the foot of Federal Street, that electrical substation, that's going away. It may not be well, we're in office, but we really should, in new report, have a form of development agreement ready to go. So that, I feel, especially if we can get somebody else to pay for it, I'd like to get that form, even if this deal never goes forward. But again, the more important point is, I actually think there's a problem under Mass. General Law 40A, for us to be talking about zoning without following the 40A system. I think we've taken that as far as we can. Just my opinion.
See if there are other councillors who want to chime in before I come back to Counselor Zede. None right now. Okay, Counselor Zede, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to respond to a couple of those. So, I want to cut to the chase. I think there's some momentum here that we want to capture. I think the Ward 2 councillor and I probably agree on that. I will not be sponsoring ordinance in two weeks or four weeks. So, to me, if we receive and file this, the only way it comes back here is if somebody is going to do that. And if you're kind of going to give me the wink and the nod that somebody's going to do it, fine. But otherwise, this goes into the file, and there's nothing about Waterfront West before us any longer. And that's what I'm concerned about, which I think we have similar goals on that, that we want to keep this going and bring it to a conclusion, because we've been, residents have been doing this long enough, we've been doing it long enough, we're trying to converge and come to something and say, this is what we can live with, and we're done. So here are my questions, because I would support getting the photo Sims done, because it seems a very logical thing for me to do, because at the heart of this is height. What scares me about doing a photo SIM without agreeing on some of the other parameters is, and this I mentioned during the ad hoc, is part of absorbing the discussion in a visual on height, is how many buildings there's going to be, that density factor. And we talked about it very briefly in the ad hoc, that the general tact that the ad hoc wants to take is, let's control the other factors and let density fall from that. So in other words, you make sure the parking is appropriate, and this, the height is appropriate, et cetera, and you let the density be a function of those things. That's fine, but if you bring me 17 buildings that are 35, 45, and 55, I might feel differently about it than if you bring me eight buildings that are 35, 45, and 55, or three buildings, one of each. You see what I'm saying? So one of the things I heard a lot viscerally from the presentations they made is, when they put up too many buildings, everybody recoils. And so the height might be more of a function of, why don't you? So that's what I'm concerned about. If you can, if the planning director can give me some measure of comfort, that we could say, get a couple photo Sims with different numbers of buildings in slightly different configurations, I might be more apt to say, why don't we make a motion here to, whatever we want to call it, authorize, or recommend, or suggest, or request that the planning department do it, then I'd be happy. But if we're going to get one photo SIM, and then we're going to be told, you've spent the money on your photo Sims, and it's, you know, there's too many buildings, I'm just trying to avoid hitting the brick wall, where we just throw everything in the trash, because I do believe there's some, there's something here, there's some compromise to be had. I just don't want to get to a point where we just, everybody sort of loses the flavor and says, forget it. So, if the, if, I don't know, if through the president, if the planning director can give us some comfort that we would be doing a good thing time-wise, and if it's at the cost of the proponents, so be it. But at least time, that we're spending our time efficiently.
I'll ask the planning director to respond.
I do think we can get different, particular angles, as well as some variation in the heights there, so we can have that, you know, again, I think that's the purpose of this, is to be able to have that discussion, determine from a certain angle, or a certain point of view, for instance, do we need to adjust the height a little bit more than the sort of broad description that's in the committee's report? We might obviously have to get down a little detail, more in detail, and so I think the model will help us to do that. So I'm seeing that as essentially a box that needs to be filled by some further revision of the 3D model.
And how easy is it to vary the number, the sheer number of buildings? I mean, can you take buildings out of it and say, okay?
Yeah, I mean, effectively, there'd be sort of, it's like layers in a drawing, you sort of turn them on and off, and they display only those options at that particular time.
Okay.
I would suggest that we primarily stick with one, you know, one version, and then have alternates off of that, just so it becomes easier for people to track, you know, what the options are.
Okay. Well then, to bring it to a conclusion, for me, I would support a receive and file, if there would be a friendly acceptance of a motion to amend to, I think request is probably the right word, request at the Office of Planning and Development, coordinate photo Sims, and really, beyond that, it's hard for me to put more detail, but in whatever in the eyes of the planning office are the most logical things, then I think we could come back in six weeks, and we'd have a finite time, something will be coming back to us, and then one of the 10 of us now that remain can decide if you want to stamp your name on something and put it in, or are we DOA, basically.
Thank you.
So that's a motion, by the way.
Is that a friendly amendment?
So, receive and file conditioned on that direction for the photo Sims?
Other than, sorry, other than submitting like a new order, I don't see, I think this is logical to be able to do it tonight and, you know, dispose of this, and that seems logical to me.
Disappointed, Congressman.
Yes.
So you would request the planning office to...
To proceed, to proceed with the creation of photo Sims and remit them to the council forthwith upon completion.
Okay.
Let me point out, this would not be accomplished by the planning department, but they'd be working with the developer, the proponent, to create those images.
Coordinate and facilitate, is that...
Effectively, I'll be reviewing the work by the consultants, and I will not obviously bring that to you until it meets that your requirements or expectations.
Do you know how much this costs? How much is this endeavor? $20,000?
Tons and thousands of dollars, yeah.
Thank you.
Again, not our problem. Counselor Tantar.
So just to be clear, we, I mean, we can't just receive and file, we need a motion, and you're proposing a motion that would just...
We have a motion on the floor to receive and file.
What is the...
With amendment.
With the amendment.
And the amendment is just what's on page 16.
Just the photo.
To evaluate the three dimensions, so what is not going to be included, authorize the Office of Planning and Development to draft proposed revision, and secondly, authorize a special legal counsel to draft a form of development. That's what, and the Ward 2 councillor said he was okay with that, is that...
Well, again, I mean, where I would say, the report, even if you adopt, sorry.
Counselor Argaman.
Even if you adopted the report without any amendment, it doesn't bind the city council to do any of those three recommendations. So I think what Counselor Zede is suggesting is that we just kill two birds with one stone. You accept the report, proceed and file it, meaning the report is done. It's done, no more work on the report. But he's asking the council to endorse the first recommendation only. And I'm okay with that.
At this point?
Yeah.
Counselor Tantar, you satisfied with that?
I understand it.
Okay. Thanks, Senator.
There's a motion to amend on the floor, I think, right?
That's right. So regarding the motion to amend...
The friendly.
Is there further discussion? Counselor Con.
Sorry, thank you, Council President. Just a quick, this is more like a point of order, just a question. So once we receive and file this, that means, like, no public, it's not out there, like Waterfront West is like a topic that is not really on our agenda. I think that's what the council from Ward 1 said. And a part of me is like, we're introducing this now in our packets, and it is sometimes nice to have something in our agenda for the public to weigh in on. And I don't know, again, I'm just wondering, procedurally, would it be somewhat beneficial for the public to have this and maybe be able to comment on it at one of our city council meetings? And just throwing that out there, I was just wondering, is there a hurry to do the receive and file?
Sure. Counselor Argaman.
I'm not making the motion because it would stop all debate, but if you want to do that, we could just do a motion to table, so it's before us, and then that would give members of the public the ability to testify live at February 11. Do that.
Okay. Counselor Devlin, then Counselor Tantar, then Counselor Zede.
I think if we do that, then we can't advance the Sims, right? Because we're tabling.
Do it separately.
Separate. You could. I think the writing's on the wall on that one as well, speaking practically about it. Counselor Tantar.
Incredibly, Counselor Devlin's raised a question I was going to raise.
It's great to see. They should do that in Washington once in a while. Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I was just going to respond to the Ward 4. Yeah, I mean, I'm being fairly surgical, purposefully, I'm leaving the other two out just because it's my opinion, I completely, wholeheartedly agree, well, first of all, the one that's easy is drafting. I think it's too early to draft. I don't see the value in having, in asking for that at this point. I agree with having a development agreement, but I think there's going to be a lot of specificity to this one, so, you know, I think it's better for us to, I mean, basically, the heart of this thing has been the height and the density, really, for a long time, and then right after that would be parking and a few other things. And then quickly, the intensity of the discussion does fall off, I think. You know, height, density, parking, you know, uses, and then slowly, things get, the temperatures lower on some of the other issues. So for me, if we can get the photo Sims going, so I think the, I thought about, I thought about tabling, and I certainly would not oppose it, but I think, I think what the Ward 2 councillor's trying to do is release the ad hoc from completing, and I completely respect that, having served on ad hocs, that at some point, some things come to a close and learn some things during the waterfront ad hoc about, you know, keeping them going and having lulls, and how it doesn't always work out. So I thought this was a compromise, I wouldn't oppose a table, but really, in four to six weeks, when you get the photo Sims, if you want public comment, I think you're going to get some public comment. So that would be my thought, so. I think maybe we could vote on the amendment and see, oh, it's for, and then move on.
Motion to sever the question. How about that one, Rich?
It's a good strategy.
I like that.
And that would do what, Rich?
Sounds very medical.
It would split the first recommendation to ask staff to coordinate the 3D model from the question of receiving and filing.
Well, it's getting tricky from a parliamentary standpoint. Let me see if we can first, I don't think that's a bad idea, I'm going to offer an opinion, and I shouldn't do that from the chair, but I guess I just did. A way out of this, I think, because we have to act on the motion to amend first.
I would guess a motion to sever would trump it.
You do.
I mean, procedurally, if we vote on the motion to sever, then we have two motions on the floor, which is understandable, which we have a motion to receive and file, and a motion to amend.
I can also withdraw, and you can withdraw, and then I can make a separate motion.
We do the motion.
All right, fine. All right. I'll second the motion to sever and move the question on that one.
Seconded, to sever the two issues. One is, and the issues are, to table...
There are two motions on the floor. One is a motion to receive and file, and a second is a motion to request the planning department to coordinate and facilitate, something I've never known, photo Sims, just like a 3D model.
I'll second the sever.
I said, in referencing page 16 of the study.
Discussion on the motion to sever.
No, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have two separate motions now. In what order must we take them up?
Motion to receive and file.
I would think logically, if we have a motion on the floor to receive and file, and a motion to amend that, that would take the motion to amend first.
All right, so discussion on the motion to amend, which was to direct the planning department to generate these photo Sims.
Coordinate and facilitate.
Coordinate and facilitate.
But I don't think it's...
We just separated.
Yeah.
We separated the two issues. We're taking the two up, one at a time.
Yeah, the first one we're going to take up is...
Actually, I mean, and now that they're separated, motion to amend doesn't make any sense.
Correct, yeah, that's what I...
So, why don't we take the motion, why don't you rephrase your motion to amend?
Sure.
Counselor Zede? Give it a shot.
I'd like to motion...
Direct.
Yeah, directly. I'd like to motion that the council request respectfully the opposite planning and development facilitate, what was the other one I used? Facilitate and something else.
Coordinate and facilitate.
Coordinate and facilitate amongst its office and with the proponent, photo Sims to be delivered to the council forthwith upon completion.
Second.
Thank you.
In accordance with page 16, so you have the heights in there.
Perfect.
A procedural matter is before us, though, and that is, the council does not direct the activity of an executive department. We could request through the mayor that the planning office conduct such an exercise. Might you accept that as a possible way to phrase your...
I did state, Mr. President, we respectfully request at the Office of Planning and Development. I mean, yeah. If you guys don't want to do it, it's fine. We will be DOA at the end of it, so.
Discussion of that proposal, then. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
And now we have the motion to table.
Received and filed.
Received and filed.
Motion to table.
Second.
That being an item that is not open to discussion.
Thank goodness.
All those in favor of tabling the...
I'm sorry, was there a second on that?
Yes, Counselor Con. Tabling the report of the ad hoc committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is tabled.
Well, we motioned, we actually, because I learned this the last one, we just tabled the motion to receive and file.
Correct.
So when this comes back, the motion to receive and file will be on the floor in two weeks. We learned that one in the last iteration of this, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Point out to the members that the clerk and I often scratch our heads on Tuesday mornings going through the record.
Motion to sever.
Express my thanks to the ad hoc committee, and Counselor Argaman in particular, for wading into this thicket. Obviously, we're not done. This is a matter that will be up at our next meeting in two weeks, at which time, I suspect, we'll have some people standing up and informing our discretion on the matter of the development of Waterfront West property. I'll just also take this moment to ask if there are any members, because this has been a little bit tricky, who have anything else to say on this matter. We don't have a matter before us, I guess I can't do that, but I'll request it anyway. Some people were kind of tentatively raising their hands along the way. No? Okay, let's move on. Thank you, councillors. Second communication, communication nine, I believe it is.
109. It's the election calendar, I don't think I need to read through it. The important points are, there's a preliminary election, if necessary, September 17, and there'll be a final municipal election, which is November 5, Tuesday, and all the other dates related there, too.
Motion to receive and file, or approve?
We'll need to approve it, but it can go to committee.
Motion to approve.
First time it's in.
Seconded by councillor.
You can't do that. Tag it.
Motion to refer, sorry, I will draw that motion. Motion to refer to general government?
Tag it.
Moved and seconded to general government. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done. Appointments.
Here are three second reading of appointments. Appointment 76, Suzanne Marzy Cameron, Milk Street, Affordable Housing Trust, 1-1, 2021. Appointment 77, David Zink, 6 Lowell Road, Electrical Inspector, 1-1, 2020. And Appointment 78, Justin Dutcher, 7 Moran Road, Harbor Commission, to 1-1, 2022.
What is the will of the council?
Motion to approve on second reading collectively.
And a seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll take a roll call on these matters, on this matter.
It's appointments 76, 77, and 78. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tonta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Igerman.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Nine yes. Appointments pass.
Good, we're on to orders. Order 83. We also have a late file that'll be at the end of this list.
Thank you. We should actually do the late file. It's communication.
No, it's a...
It's an order, 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 excuse me. Order 86, City Council approves a minor amendment to the scope of work previously associated with FY '19 CPA funds. The original scope of work is modified and expanded to include the use of up to $30,000 from the original $100,000 appropriation to engage consultants to assist with a housing feasibility study specific to the Brown School property in advance of future disposition of said property by the mayor and city council. Jointly submitted, Counselors Tontar and Igerman.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Z. Counselor Tontar, I think you beat him to the punch.
Yes. You know, generally, these kind of motions from community preservation that have to do with funding come before the Budget and Finance Committee. However, we all, we have already approved the $100,000 in funding, and this motion really refers to the content rather than financial matters, and I think it belongs better in planning and development with that expertise.
Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak a little bit about the Brown School as this heads in. So as most folks know, the Brown School is right on the, right on the border of Ward one and Ward two. Both the Ward two council and I have a lot of constituents that are deeply concerned about this, and I just think, you know, just have to talk about how we got here, because I was the original proponent of adding the time limit that would limit the funds until August, because I sort of was worried about the scenario where a whole bunch of time would pass and essentially nothing would happen. I'm sure other counselors have received inquiries about the building, but bottom line is, the city did an RFP for this property, and it received three different, you know, responses to that request. A selection committee was formed and spent six months on this, and the recommendation of that selection committee was not acted on, is maybe the most polite way to say it, by the administration, and everything was put on halt, on stop. And so now, we're basically, I don't know what we're doing. We just seem to be continuously studying something when there are clearly conflicts. You know, this is the, you know, something can't be everything to everyone kind of problem. There are a million different goals for this building, affordable housing, youth services is in the mix, the neighborhood considerations are in the mix, but really, it's actually gotten to be a little bit more simple for me, and that is that, you know, there's a strong, there are strong pulls on both sides. So one is to have 100% affordable, and the other one is to have a more modest number of units in order to sort of be respectful of the neighborhood. And the problem is, these are diametrically opposed things, because as I've come to learn, and unless somebody will correct me in the future if I'm wrong, the funding mechanisms by which organizations that do nonprofit development pull, they're sort of like a minimum number of units. There's sort of a minimum threshold that's required in order for them to get funding. So I don't know where we're going with this project. I do know as well, the administration continues to provide us updates that we're waiting for a bill to snake through the state legislature, so we can build another building or do some kind of a rehab on Low Street, which really has not been discussed or studied by this council in depth. So I'm going to vote to send it to committee, but I felt like, you know, somebody should say something about, at least from the Ward one perspective. People are waiting for something to happen with this building. Some people are unhappy with the way the building looks. My personal concern is, as the market continues to soften, are we missing the apex where we, you know, we have a lot of needs? So when we dispose of a building, we need to take into account those needs. Some are financial, some are other, such as affordable housing, but at the end of the day, at some point, you have to recognize that not every goal can be achieved, and I guess I'm a little bit frustrated that the selection committee did spend a lot of time balancing these things, and in the end, we essentially just threw that work away and, quite frankly, haven't made any substantial progress that I can see. So I don't know where, you know, where this will go. I'm hopeful that the Planning and Development Committee will take this up in concert with an order that was proposed last year with disposition terms on the Brown School. I realize there's some nexus with the administration, but the council has prerogative here on disposing this building on the terms that we can come to an agreement on, and I think that we should settle this, just as we are working hard to settle Waterfront West without further delay.
I wasn't certain. Counselor Devlin, did you want to speak? I wasn't sure if you'd raised your hand.
Oh, no.
Counselor Igerman?
Yeah, as a co-sponsor, and the school is in Ward two, I just wanted to explain where my head was on it. So, yeah, I introduced an ordinance last year, last February, on disposition, because I thought it had to be an ordinance on order, but in any case, that's still in our committee. So the way I envision this, if the council votes to refer it, is that whatever study that would be done would mesh with the work we left off with. So I think our last meeting on it was in March last year, and we came up with seven different scenarios that needed to be studied. You know, soup to nuts. At one extreme, it was tear down the building and plant grass. That was it. And then at the other extreme was, you know, buy new land, build a new youth services center, build a new gymnasium for the youth services center, all offsite, and then dedicate the school just to affordable housing. So that's what I have in mind. Those, to me, that's where we left off last week. And then finally, yeah, I think the community needs an update, so I think Counselor Z and I should probably hold another meeting in the gym.
Sure.
Because it's been 11 months.
Fair enough. Further discussion. All those in favor of referring this matter to Planning and Development, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in the lap of Planning and Development. Next item.
Next item is Order 83.
Order 83, yes.
Which is the acceptance of grant, assignment of easements and restrictions from the Maritime Society to the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, submitted, Counselor Connell.
Is there a motion on, from the council? Let's do a vote.
I'll make a motion to refer to Planning and Development as an easement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at this time? Counselor Z.
I promised probably my last big one of the night, but we have a lot of pent-up unhappiness about this one, so I feel obliged to speak about it. I just want residents to understand what this is. So we deal with easements fairly regularly. Sometimes they come in, or even deed restrictions, preservation restrictions. These are not things that we've never heard of. They come in, usually it's attached to some kind of development project that occurred, and one of the quid pro quo's for the city was that we get a restriction typically in exchange for some benefit to the, to the proponent, and it's usually not a bad deal. I voted for my, plenty for my fair share. This one gives me heartburn desperately. There's no amount of Prilosec that can solve this one, and that's because, here's what happened. So if you're sitting at home thinking, okay, it's just not a preservation restriction or deed restriction, that sounds fine. The Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, which you happen to get a flavor of tonight, took a building that you and me and a lot of other people put a lot of money into over the last 40 years as taxpayers, more than a million dollars, potentially more than that, depending on how you count it, and they sold that building for the vast sum of $100. And in addition to that $100, you get these petty deed restrictions. And the reason I call them petty is, first of all, I personally, the city council president, the Ward two council, while I don't speak for them, I can say factually that the three of us put in a considerable amount of time personally attending their meetings and essentially begging them to take into account our consideration. That was the heart of my question about where does the council fit into this discussion? And I firmly believe that had that effort, and actually that of Bill Harris, a resident, I should mention as well, had that effort not been expended, I believe they would have, they would have dumped the building with no deed restrictions whatsoever, and I have no problem saying that publicly. I sat in the meetings, we were emailing on the brink of meetings at 6:50 PM, trying to get them to cancel them and just hold on and slow down. It's actually embarrassing. I don't think this body here would ever dispose of a building in that way and expect to be reelected. You just can't take a million-plus-dollar building and give it away for $100. I personally suggested several things for the deed restrictions. I'm not personally happy with how they came out. I respect that they're better than they would have, but in my opinion, if any of those clauses were to be triggered, there would be considerable legal wrangling, and frankly, the deed restrictions cover the absolute apocalyptic-type events for the Maritime Society. I've taken my flak, you know, you don't like the Maritime Society, you don't like the Custom House. I don't, that doesn't bother me. I like them all. I like the people. I think they've done a phenomenal job, but, you know, 10, 12 years ago, that was an organization on the brink of bankruptcy. So what are you really getting here? You're getting basically some deed restrictions which cover the worst of all events, that if you were to trigger them, are only this much better than taking the building back by eminent domain, in my opinion, because you're going to end up fighting it about it, and you're going to end up expending public funds. So why does it give me heartburn? Well, I really want to say no, because to me, this is a ridiculous question to ask the council, and the chair said, well, the city agreed to this. The city council, which in my opinion is at least 50% of the city, didn't agree to anything. We're being asked to agree now, after the fact. There is no recourse. If we say we don't like these deed restrictions, the best we could do is reject them, in which case, we essentially, you know, the city's meager rights are not codified. So what is, what is one to do? I don't know. I got an invitation in my mailbox. I'm invited to a ribbon-cutting, and I jokingly said, I used to own this building, and you all did too, but now you don't. So maybe you want to go, and you're invited. So that's my two cents. I think we'll be long gone when there are problems. I really do. I don't think this is something that happens next year. I think they've got a dedicated group of folks, but we don't make two-year decisions here. We make 100-year decisions, and you just don't take a valuable, you know, if I stood up at the February 11th meeting and suggested we privatize the Bartlett Mall or any other historic asset in the city, I don't know that I would make it to November. So that's my two cents on this. I'm very mixed on it. I keep thinking I'm going to vote no to even send it to committee on principle, but I thought people deserved just a few-minute explanation on what this actually is, because it seems complicated, but it's not. You had a million dollars, now you get 100 bucks and a piece of paper. It's that simple. Thank you.
Further discussion. The motion is?
Refer to Planning and Development.
Refer to Planning and Development. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It is referred to Planning and Development with one exception. Let's move to ordinance, I'm sorry, Order 85 regarding parking. No, I take that back. 84.
84 is also regarding parking, Section 13, 176.2, 15 minutes.
I got half of it right.
Also. Liberty Street, two spaces on the south side, beginning from State Street, running in an easterly direction, and one space on the north side, located west of the entrance to the Daily News parking lot. Submitted, Counselor Igerman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Moved and seconded to public safety. Discussion.
Just quickly for the public, there's no magic to the number of spaces. We wanted one, you know, at least. There's Starbucks there, and then there's Abraham's Bagels, so we turn it over to public safety to figure it out.
Fair enough. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a public safety. Now we move to Order 85.
Which is Section 13, 181, paid parking lots. Essentially, the change is in the hours. It now states, no person shall park a vehicle between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, between the hours of noon and 6:00. It would read with this amendment, parentheses, 6:00 PM from January 1st through April 1st. So in other words, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, January 1st through April 1st. Submitted, Counselor Igerman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Moved and seconded to public safety. Discussion. Counselor Igerman.
Yeah, you'll recall that about a year ago, we, I think it was a year ago, we changed the parking rules to go to 8:00 PM. I was one of the advocates for that, because I thought that there was visitor revenue that was not being collected, but in the winter months, it's a different story. We're trying to spur visitors, so that's where it comes from. This was something I discussed at the Parking Advisory Committee. Counselor Z is on that, too, chaired by Parking Clerk Richard Jones, and the chamber was in favor of it, represented by Frank Cousins, so I think we're getting there, and now it's in the hands of public safety, I hope.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of this referral, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's in public safety. Now we'll move to ordinances. Ordinance 27.
Which is a second reading of the zoning map, specifically the green shaded areas moving B1, 2, and R3.
Devlin, I'm going to recuse myself.
Counselor Devlin is recusing himself from this matter. Thank you.
Again, it refers to a map depicted and entitled, proposed zoning ordinance B1 to R3 as approved January 14th, 2019. It essentially depicts the zoning change on the north side of Story Avenue. Jointly submitted, Counselors Junta and O'Brien.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve on second reading.
I was thinking of tabling... Is there a second before discussion?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Can I raise a point here?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
I mean, it's, the green area is currently R3 in the map, and so I think the language doesn't quite match. It's actually the area within the heavy black-lined area that's being changed from B1 to R3, isn't it?
I think the map changed from when it was submitted.
Let's raise our hands to be recognized, please. The question was, does the map correspond with the language? I'm going to ask the planning director to address this matter.
So what you're seeing highlighted in the black down here on that map is the area that would change from B1. It's shaded B1 right now on the map there, but that would be changed to a residential district, which in the end would look yellow, like the cemetery area, for instance.
I'm just saying the language doesn't, it says, "All parcels located within the green shaded area."
I'm sorry, was that the original order? I'm sorry, I wasn't involved with the text part, only the map, so I don't know if, perhaps that language can just be corrected in committee.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Second reading. We did have a second, did we not?
Just change that to the black bounded area, if you want. That might be...
Just a second, Andy. Let me ask you, just a parliamentary question to the clerk. Did we get a second on that?
We have...
I was the second.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Igerman.
Okay, well, it looks like one of the sponsors may want to table this thing anyway, so he's going to talk about that, but I think, I don't think you can change the text, because we voted on it once. You can change the exhibit, so... But you can change the exhibit, so...
Bingo.
I would do a motion to amend the exhibit dated 1/23/19, so that the heavy-black-lined area is shaded green.
Yeah.
That's my amendment.
Yeah, it's some different color jean than the R3 area that's already green. Yeah. I second that.
Okay.
I second it.
You second that. Thank you. We have a motion to amend the map that is, will be appended to the ordinance. Let me ask Mr. Port to approach. Is that something you can do, Andy?
We can change that map to correct that, yes. It could have been done either way. It could have been either an adjustment to the text that's before you, or to the map itself. Either way, it would be fine.
And for clarification, primarily for the public, will this map accompany the text so that when the public looks at the text, they can figure it out?
Yes, in fact, we'll have the final text that you've approved with the map itself, and then our administrative assistant will update the GIS map so that actually what folks are seeing online will be, will correspond to this.
Very well. Clerk has a problem?
No, I couldn't agree more that it's better to change the map, then you're not changing the language of the first reading.
Yes.
However, we have a missing sponsor.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a catch.
May we call a question to some amendment, and then you can do...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we can do that, and then you're going to take...
So the motion to amend by inserting a new shaded map was, Councilor Augman seconded by...
Tantar.
Councilor Zede, is your comment relative to the changing of the map?
It is. My only issue is, the first, the first reading, the map was correct. So I don't think you want to, I mean, it's just a clerical error, the wrong map got put in here, or a different map. And the thing is, there are, there is a difference between the two maps. If you, I have last week's packet, two weeks ago's packet open, it had the green, but I think we should do this the right way, which maybe is, let's table it and do a first reading again the next time, and start the slate clean, so that, because it's a zoning ordinance. We, I don't, you don't want to mess with this. That's my opinion. But you can do it as, I have the, I can show the clerk. I mean, I have the map from last time. On this one, the thing that's really different is, you see where that little piece juts out? There's another piece that juts out to the left, and that wasn't shown on the previous map. So I don't know how to, I don't know what that is. There's a small hallway in between the two there that we never, we talked about that, the island thing, whatever you call the peninsula, that length. Yeah, exactly. But the other one, I don't know what that is. So that's my, I don't know. I mean, I'm not the sponsor, but I'm a little nervous about this here.
Mr. Port?
I was not involved with the original map that the council received that was partly sponsored by Councilor Brian. This map here, because it's a larger scale, it doesn't actually show that little strip, but the reason why this map that you're seeing today, more, current one, more detailed and accurate, is because what was discussed in committee was rezoning particular parcels and keeping those parcels in their entirety, a certain district. So because those parcels uniquely have some extensions that are actually drive aisles that go out to Story Avenue, as well as Woodman Way, those little fingers there, they're not shown in this detail on this here, because these aren't exactly following the partial lines. But the intent of what came out of the committee was to follow those partial lines, so you are seeing more accurate on this.
So it's an expansion of the map without the appropriate colors?
Crack it, right. We couldn't easily show it in, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah. All right. There are a couple ways out. We could table this, or we could withdraw, or we could withdraw it, recommit it to the committee, and let them bring it out in two weeks' time. That's one way out. So we have something in front of us that we can act upon. What's the will of the sponsor?
There we go.
Yeah, my first comment was, I want to table it. And yeah, the reason why I want to table it, of course, is Council O'Brien's not here. And this is his ward, and there's a few other issues, obviously, that have popped up here. You know, I don't know that we necessarily need to go back to committee on this. I think we just need to fix the map for the second reading. I think it's as simple as that. In committee, we've talked about the little, little piece that's identified here. It's just a little parking lot for about 10 cars. It's insignificant to what we're really talking about here. It affects nothing. So that's what I would like to do, is just table it, and then have a correct map, and sponsors all together, so we can do it right in the second reading.
Second.
Thank you.
What is, so do we have a motion?
A motion to table.
And the motion is now seconded by Councilor Tantar.
No discussion.
Not a matter subject to discussion. All those in favor of tabling this item until our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Andy, you have your marching orders? Thank you.
This presents us with a similar situation. Both sponsors should be present under our Rule 12. Only one is present. It actually says, "When the clerk reads the measure and the council does not have both, the council shall not consider such measure."
Motion to waive Rule 12 to allow us to take this up and refer it to committee without the second sponsor present.
Second.
Ooh. Discussion of waiving the rules to allow this matter to be referred to committee.
Why?
I don't know.
I think you need to go to committee. I thought we were just going to kick it to our next...
Hold on, ordinance 29 is a new one. This is the corner of 711.
Yeah.
This is a new thing, right?
This is a separate ordinance.
Oh, you just want to send it to committee.
Yes.
If you want to table it, we could...
Which is, where we go, and what was, what committee?
Planning and Development.
Discussion of referring this, suspending the rules in order that this matter may be referred to Planning and Development. It was moved by Council Zede, seconded by Council Vogel. Thank you, Council.
No?
It was not my second. I thought it was going on to discussion.
Did you, did you second?
I believe it was Junta.
Yes, just point of order. Shouldn't it first be the, a vote on whether we want to waive the rules before we decide what committee to go to? Wouldn't that be two votes?
You could do it in two votes.
Could do it in two votes, could do it in one vote. I don't think it matters, does it?
It's up to the mover.
It's up to the motioning party.
I think the motion's been made, and I'm comfortable that we're on parliamentary...
There's two motions. Motion to waive it and to send it to Planning and Development.
From a parliamentary point of view, we can act upon it.
How many, point of order, how many votes do we need to waive a rule?
Eight.
Eight.
You need six. Motion to sever.
No, I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to withdraw. Who was my second?
I'll remove my second.
And I'll just make a singular motion right now. A motion to waive Rule 12, so that we can hear ordinance 29 tonight, for wherever...
Is there a second to waive the rules? Seconded. That alone is the motion before us. Council Vogel.
Thank you.
Council Zede.
Sure. I mean, I'm just trying to ferry this off to committee, that's all. I didn't think it was nefarious. There's no reason other than, it's probably destined for committee, let's let them get to work on it. If we want to table it and send it to committee next time, I suppose we could. I don't know what it, what it, what does it do to do that? I know that it does save two weeks to let it go to committee now. But if it's controversial to go to committee, I respect that. I've certainly had those controversies myself.
So the motion is to suspend the rules. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter. We need eight votes to suspend the rules.
Motion to waive, Council Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tantar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zede.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
He is absent.
Recused.
Thank you. Councilor Earls.
Absent.
He's no longer here. Councilor Augman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
I believe we have our eight.
All right. Motion to refer to Planning and Development.
Second. Moved and seconded to refer this matter to the Committee on Planning and Development. Is there a discussion of that matter? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call. Council Tantar.
I'm going to make a point here. I sponsored a zoning change in the last year, and it was, I wanted it sent back to committee. It was not sent back to committee, and I was not happy about that. I don't support this. I'm going to have to hear a strong argument for doing this now. However, I do support sending it to committee, so that the committee can consider and come back. I would not do what was done to me.
Council Junta.
Just so the folks at home know what's going on, previously, we talked about making Newport condos R3, which currently they're B1. This would make them residential for the first time in their 40 years of existence. The condo association would like that. They'd like to be residential, which is nice. In our conversations with the planning board, it was discussed, the entire corner could possibly become R3, which is the parking lot for children's health care, 711, and then the car lot on Story Avenue. So now we're not talking about a little island, we're actually talking about a whole block that could become R3. And it starts to make a lot more sense when you look at it, and you start to really think about the options that you have if this was R3. Because right now, you don't have any options, because it's just B1. If you're going to do something with it, it's going to be a business, and that's it. But with R3, all sorts of options now become a topic of conversation. So this is why I bring it back in a larger format, because this is the discussion we had, and the more we look at it, the more it makes sense. So it's really time to have this as a full-scale discussion. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote to refer this matter to committee.
Just a motion to refer Ordinance 29, Planning and Development, moved by Council Zede, seconded by...
No, moved by Council Junta.
By Council Junta, seconded by Councilor, I believe, Zede.
Thank you. Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zede.
Yes.
Council Devlin has recused himself. Council Earls is absent. Councilor Augman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes. Would Council Junta invite Council Devlin back to the chambers? Remarkable. Committee items, budget and finance. Nothing, education.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick reminder, our joint education meeting will be Monday, February 4, at 5:30 at the Senior Center, and we're going to be discussing MCAS, and we're going to have folks from the NEF there to discuss their plans for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, nothing at this time. License and permits.
Nothing this, tonight.
Neighborhood and City Services.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Planning and Development.
Yes, motion to remove Appointment 79, Tanya Hartford.
Second.
To the planning board.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Council Augman.
So we held a public hearing, as required by rule, asked some questions of Board Member Hartford, and we recommended three to nothing that she be reappointed.
Very well. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Should this be a roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, it should, this appointment.
Approval of Tanya Hartford, Appointment, Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zede.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Augman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else out of Planning and Development, Councilor?
Yes. Motion to waive the rules to allow consideration of Stephen Moore and Andrew Port, Appointments 74 and 80, without a public hearing.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Council Augman.
The committee posted a public hearing on these appointments, as required, for Thursday, but we didn't have a quorum. So let the record show that both Mr. Moore and Mr. Port showed up, and I had a nice chat with them, and that was it.
And these are both reappointments?
These are both reappointments.
Thank you. Further discussion. Council Tantar.
Just a question, did any members of the public attend to the...
Good question? No.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on these matters.
Are we waiving the rules?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm waiving the rules, yes, I'm waiving the rules.
The motion on the floor is to waive the rules.
And then we'll take them up individually. That would be my recommendation.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zede.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yay.
Council Augman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
The rules are waived.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Individually, or?
Collectively.
Separately? As, on balance?
Collectively.
Collectively.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none.